Okay, we'll call the council to order. Ally, could you please take role?
Councilmember Bruce Bassett.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Thero.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Grady.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Grous.
Here.
Deputy Mayor El Jankie.
I'm here.
Mayor Jim Pierman.
Here. Great. Well, this is, evening's gonna be a special evening. We're gonna be working on trying to fill our sixth, or seventh seat. And as coming down Island Crest Way, I was just kinda wondering what 40th and Island Crest Way would've looked like if you've all run for office at the same time. The signage would've been very interesting. And anyway, with that, we're gonna start out with appearances. And if anyone would like to address the council, please come forward. Name and address in three minutes.
For nearly fourteen years, I've been campaigning for open and honest government, something we don't have. But the city council really outdid itself last Thursday with the sham council vacancy interviews, where without explanation, virtually no questions were asked during the sham interviews. And certainly no questions whose answers could serve as the basis of an informed choice to fill the council vacancy. Why not? The fake interviews were merely a ploy to disguise what is really happening, which is that council members themselves had asked select individuals to apply, and those individuals are the only ones who will be nominated with a chance to be selected. Those candidates who responded to the public notice are merely filler. The last time a council vacancy was filled was in May of 1999, when David Clancy vacated his position. Nine candidates applied to the usual notice in sham interviews. Of the nine, only two were nominated. I made a fuss at the time that the process was dishonest and a backroom deal. It turned out that the only candidates nominated were those who'd been asked by a council member to apply. Susan Blake, the eventual winner, was asked to apply by Clivern and Orser. Dan Grous, who didn't win, was asked to apply by Merkel. So who was asked to apply and who will be selected? We can't know for sure, but I'm betting on Jane Meyer. She knows how the sham works, and I don't think she would apply unless she was asked and had significant support. Jane's particular strength is the deceptive way she ran the Distorter to support the city council. I was particularly impressed that in her speech, she pretended that during her editorship, the Distorter balanced, was balanced, sometimes supporting and sometimes opposing the council. Naturally, I believe the council should reveal before the vote who was asked to apply. So, I believe the elements of our dishonest government that need to be changed are, one, the dishonesty of the process. What council members are doing in the background and how that affects the vote should be revealed. Two, the stegery of the Distorter, covering up what's really going on down here. And three, the smiley-faced council environment with the pretense that the council is about positive people saying positive things. I've been circulating a DVD contains under oath depositions of Mayor Pierman, City Manager Conrad, and our own city attorney Kathleen Knight. Someone has posted the DVD clips on YouTube with links at Sex in the City of Mercer Island dot com. One word, Sex in the City of Mercer Island dot com. I think islanders, if they look at the clips, the DV clips, will see how nasty it gets behind the smiley-faced veneer.
I don't know how to respond to that, so I'm gonna refrain. I think you've offended a lot of good people with your comments. But anyway, with that, we're gonna go on. Would anyone else like to address the council?
Hello, my name's Andrew Shanafelt, and I'm actually appearing on behalf of the Muscular Dystrophy Association, here to say thank you very much. The firefighters at the Mercer Island Fire Department did a wonderful fundraiser for us this year called a Fill the Boot. We've been doing it the last few years in Mercer Island, and we raised the most money we've ever raised this year. So I'm here to prepare, or to present this plaque to say thank you so much for your support. They raised $7,382 this year. And the department, the entire department, really stood up and did a lot of hard work to get this thing off the ground, and really helped us out in our cause to end neuromuscular disease. So I just wanna say thank you so much, and this plaque's for you guys.
Great. Well, thank you very much. That's great.
Would anyone else like to address the council? Okay, seeing none, we will close appearances.
We have the minutes of our regular meeting December 6th and a special meeting of December 13th. Is a motion to approve?
Move to approve the minutes.
Second?
Second.
Okay, moved to second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the payables and payroll?
We have second set of minutes. Do we not?
We did them both together.
Yeah. So move, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye opposed? And that passes. Now on to the regular business, which is the city council vacancy. At this point, I'm gonna have Ally come up, if you would, and join us here. And I explained the process to you, so you know. There we go. Hey, what is, there you go. Rich hasn't been demoted. Ally's our official vote taker, so she will be helping this process. To explain what's about ready to happen, the council, in a moment, each council member will have an opportunity to nominate one person. And we'll close the nominations, and at that point, we will have people who speak on behalf of those nominations, and they will close the comments. And at that point, Ally will be taking a vote. And if any person receives four votes, then they will become our seventh council member. If they fail to have four votes, then we will have another vote of those people to see if there's a change, and we'll continue until we narrow it down, and hopefully, tonight, find a person with four votes to select as a council member. And contrary to what you just heard, this, the council here made a unanimous decision to do this process in the brightness of day in front of the cameras. In the past, these sessions were done in executive sessions, and the reason was, they felt that in discussing or thinning down the group, it would be easier on the candidates, because we wanna be respectful of the candidates, because we're gonna be discussing their strengths and weaknesses in front of the cameras. This council felt that we wanted to do this in the brightness of day all the way through. And also, the way it was designed, the process, was to give us an opportunity to spend some quality time with people over a couple weeks. And that was it. The, to get a feel for a person with a three to four-minute presentation, and maybe a couple questions, is a little less than what we would like. And so the council members have been spending a tremendous amount of time, they're in their private time, getting to know these candidates for a couple hours at a time. And I think everyone's had way too much coffee, and they've, everyone in this group here has taken this very seriously, and looked at these people. And to be honest, I couldn't have wished for a better group of people to come forward. And I think all of us have the dilemma tonight, that we not only have a few friends, personal friends, that are gonna be competing for this slot, we have acquaintances, we've had neighbors, we have people here that we believe in and trust and admire, and we're gonna have to thin it down to one person tonight. And this is a tough, tough job. So anyway, we're about ready to do that. And so with that, what we'd like to do is, Ally, I think-
Mr. Mayor, just one question. If we do deadlock by chance, and we go to another session, can you clarify what candidates will then be available?
Good question. And Mike asked me this earlier tonight, today. I didn't have a good answer for him, and I thought maybe the group would like to weigh in on this. If we have an impasse tonight, and we can't select someone, two options. We bring it back in the future and open up the nominations for everyone again, or we continue with the same nominations and try to whittle it down again. Maybe if we can have kind of a feel for that before we go and get that resolved, would that be, that be good at this point? And maybe people's opinions? Bruce?
Well, thank you. My opinion would be that we, we just wade into the beginnings of this, and let the, if we do end up in a situation like that, we agree to a plan at the time when we find ourselves in that position, rather than trying to, trying to decide that now.
Mike, your thoughts?
I guess if we do reach an impasse, my recommendation would be we start over. And not with more candidates, but with, with the same candidates and start the nomination process once again.
Start fresh.
Start fresh, yeah.
Elle, any thoughts? Dan?
I would agree with Mike on that one.
I'm fine with Councilmember Grady.
Okay, so it sounds like that's what we'll do. Is that good? Okay, great. With that, what I was gonna do is random, to, to put your nominations forward. I was gonna have you do numbers, but I forgot to do that. Ally, do you wanna figure out a way, since you're impartial, and call a council member, or does that work, or nothing? Do you know what I'm gonna do? Before we do that?
Put there and throw darts.
Let's, let's do this. Yeah, we're gonna pick numbers. We're gonna do this real quick. So then there's no, so then they, it comes out totally random.
On the spot for you.
Okay. This is more fun. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah.
Hold up for me here.
So, so why are we doing it this way?
Because I want it to be totally random, because someone thinks that we do things without the brightness of day.
Think this is orchestrated?
Yes, it's orchestrated. So here we go. We're unorchestrated. There we go.
All right. And I got any sort of container we can put these in? I guess I'll just-
Oh, you can just do hands.
Okay.
Okay, what we'll do is now, we're just gonna put the name forward, and no comments until everyone's been put into nomination, and then we'll speak to your nomination. Who's got number one?
I would nominate Debbie Bertin.
Who has number two?
I'd like to nominate Steve Marshall.
Who's got three?
I'll nominate Patty Darling.
Okay. I have four, and Jane Meyer-Braun.
I have five, I'd like to nominate Aaron Cornblum.
And I'll nominate Tana Sen.
Okay. So now that we have done this behind the door and selected our person, right? Okay. At this point, we'll close the nominations, and we will speak to our nominees. And would you like to go in numbered order? So Dan?
Thanks, Jim. I've, I've known Debbie for almost, probably ten years. And actually, Debbie's one of the first people to contact me and others on the council when she, when we were first elected. At the time, Debbie was organizing an effort on Southeast 72nd to put in an area where people could walk along the street. And it was, it was a big issue. And what was, what was so impressive about what she did during that effort was that she invited all of us who were then on the council to come over to Southeast 72nd, walk the street, talk with the neighbors. And she did it in a way which was not threatening, which was not, "The world's gonna come to an end if you don't do this." She just explained the case. She had other people explain the issue. And when some of us told her that we don't do sidewalks on Mercer Island, she didn't get upset, and instead, worked with the council at the time to come up with a plan, which was eventually implemented on Southeast 72nd, where you have a shoulder where people can now walk and bicycle and push strollers, and it's been a tremendous asset. But that was sort of the first time I had met Debbie. And since then, I've had the opportunity to work with her on several projects, primarily involving playgrounds and parks. And, and each time, it was not coming to the council and saying, "The world's gonna come to an end," or threatening, or organizing a mass of humanity to come out and, and hit us at a meeting with twenty or thirty people talking. It was always a very reasoned argument. It was also, in most situations, actually bringing community groups to work with the city, so that it was not simply a question of asking the city for money. It was oftentimes working with the preschool association, or other organizations that had gotten behind a project, and were willing to contribute their time and their resources. And it was that kind of collaborative effort, which was so impressive in, in every project she got engaged in. And in every project, the other thing that was amazing about it was that they were always very meticulously done, and very methodically done, and always successfully done. And that, to me, it showed a determination and a willingness to, to push for things, and do it in a way which I think all of us in the council, in our own dealings, value, in that we, we don't try to force things down each other's throat. We try to go through a reasoned discussion, and come up with a solution which works for a majority of the council, and hopefully, the majority of the community. So I, I think Debbie would be a tremendous asset to this council, and someone that would maintain the kind of decorum and the kind of positive attitude that I think all of us are very proud of on this council, and, and would like to see maintained.
Number two?
Very good, Mr. Mayor. And again, I echo your comments. This is not an easy task, because there are so many qualified candidates. I chose to nominate Steve Marshall, because I've known him for gosh, eight to ten years as well. And he has done a tremendous amount of work behind the scenes for the city, pro bono. We got to working together about four years ago on some energy-related activities throughout the region, and he's a national expert, particularly in electric vehicle transformation. And both he and I have worked with the delegation, and worked with the regional players, to not only help organize the city, but also the region, to posture it to be able to receive tens of millions of dollars in grant monies over the last three years. Specifically, to help identify areas in the region for placement of electric vehicle charging stations, putting fleet managers in a position where they can, in bulk, go after electric cars and trucks at a reasonable cost. And all the while, he's done it without being paid. He's retired from working in the energy utility industry. He, right now, as a matter of fact, is back in upstate New York, talking to the Rockefeller Foundation to try to get money for this city and the region on these various issues. So I guess, you know, in terms of his qualifications, he's as qualified, if not more so, than, you know, most people that have applied. But, you know, I know him very well. I love his demeanor. He's very calm, just like I am all the time. And, and very measured, and, but very articulate. And he really does his homework, and he, when he comes to the table, he comes with a lot of information and a strong willingness to wanna help this community. He's been on the planning commission for a number of years, I know. Done great work there. Always is volunteering for community-related activities, both with the school and with the city. So, like so many of you who have applied, I nominate him on this first round. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Number three?
That's me. Well, I gotta say it again. It's, it's very challenging. I, I had a, I had a, I was gonna propose a, a rule that we get to nominate about five people each, so we could cover all the bases, but that's not the way it works. So, I'm nominating Patty Darling, for a couple reasons. One, I, I give her, or anybody who's run before and knows what it's like to run for city council, extra bonus point, right there. And secondly, I recall the other evening when she addressed us, she brought a couple of unique talents that kinda struck me. One is, she suggested that she'd work in an organization with hundreds of women, and only like three or four men. Or maybe it's thousands of women, and only three or four men. And I said, "Well, you know, that, that probably is commendable." But where it's really commendable, I think, is she's worked in an organization with thousands of men, and only three or four women. And I think it would be commendable, or she would bring a nice touch to this council. I got a feeling that she'd be able to, you know, kick some butt, and take some names, and get us straightened out up here.
I'm number four. Jane Meyer-Braun is my nominee, and it's a great pleasure for me to do this. By the way, Jane Charlotte is very excited also. But through the years, I've known Jane for, I think, two decades. We were involved in a lot of things, especially through the community center, and building the community center, and all the interesting debate that went on to that community center. I found Jane incredibly fair and even. I've also know that she is not shy to say her opinion on things, and she did so in the Mercer Island Reporter. Very independent, and I think that that is really a great thing that we could have on this council. Someone who I think is reasonable, who can look at the information, make a measured decision, and help guide the policy of the city. Also, in that capacity, she has seen an awful lot in the way that this island has developed good and bad policies. And I think that that is really a real asset for us as we move forward. Also, seeing Jane in her capacity with the Sister City Association, she literally built that organization. I think her initials are all over it. She has done that with great passion, and she's earned the respect of everyone through both the staff and the community in that role. She has also, and seeing her in a diplomatic role, which I have, you couldn't have a person with greater grace. So with that, it's my pleasure, and I wish you well, and I wish everyone well. It's a great group so far.
Number five, I'm happy to nominate Aaron Cornblum. I've known Aaron for about five years now, and I've served with him on the Youth and Family Services Board. And he's really impressed me on that board with his demeanor, and also his, his uncanny ability just to sit back, listen, and to make a few very on-the-bullseye comments about what we're going through, his ability to relate to the young people on that, on that board. And I think that's a quality that serves well up here, is someone who sits back, listens to all the facts, and then makes an informed opinion. He's lived a life of service, starting with the Air Force, and then continuing as a, as the president of his college class, and also coordinating with the, with the neighborhood and his bar association for people who need defense and, and, and debt issues. So I very proudly nominate Aaron.
Before I speak to my nomination, I, I wanted to address for just a minute the comments that Mr. Appleman made. I didn't ask any of these folks to apply, and I didn't have any foregone conclusion as to who I was going to support coming into this. And in fact, even this afternoon, I still didn't really know exactly where my support was gonna land. I ended up interviewing each of the folks, I think there were a total of six, who contacted me and said, "I'd like to talk." And I met, or talked with each of those. And then out of that short list of folks who I wanted to talk more with, I went back and, and had further conversations with yesterday and today, because I wanted to know them in more detail. In no way did I feel like there was a foregone conclusion here. And I take offense at, at the thought that I'm accused of having a foregone conclusion in this. So, just like to put that out there. I nominated Tana Sen. Tana is, has a master's in public policy and administration from Columbia, and that alone, I think, puts her into a, a knowledge of this kind of stuff that most of us don't have. She's, I think, younger than some of the other candidates, but has been very active in the Jewish community, and has been getting active in the Mercer Island community. I haven't known her, I didn't know her before this process, but I have found her to be articulate, bright, and engaging. And I think that she's someone who's a rising star in the community, and I hope that she, whether selected for this or not, will remain deeply involved, and I suspect we'll see a lot more of her. So I put her forth as, as somebody I'm impressed with, and, and would like to have a shot at this.
That ends our, our comments. So at this point, Ally, it is yours.
Okay. We're gonna do a roll call vote, so I'll call each of your names, and we're gonna do it in alphabetical order. And you'll tell me which person, which nominee you are voting for. So, Councilmember Bruce Bassett.
Tana Sen.
Councilmember Mike Thero.
Aaron Cornblum.
Councilmember Mike Grady.
Steve Marshall.
Councilmember Dan Grous.
Patty Bertin.
Councilmember El Jankie, excuse me, Deputy Mayor El Jankie.
Patty Darling.
Mayor Jim Pierman.
Yes. Jane Meyer-Braun.
Okay, we have one vote for each of the nominees.
And I will turn it back over to you. Okay. At this point, it's coming back, and see if we can start narrowing down. Would anyone like to start speaking to the nominations again?
Well, I'd like to, I'll say something. Going to round two, I'd like to put a nod to Patty Darling.
Going to round two, I'd like to put a nod to Patty Darling. She's impressed me, I guess I first started to know who Patty Darling was whenever I ran, and I saw her on the other side of 40th and Island Crest Way, and running a campaign. I thought she ran a very professional campaign. And in running a campaign, I think you learn part of the island that you get, that's the only way that you'll learn as thorough of the island as you could, is by campaigning, regardless of how much time you spend on the island and how involved you are in the community. Until you start campaigning, then you, not until then, you really understand all four corners of the island and the demographics of the island. Patty's doing great work in the emergency preparedness arena of our program, and she's very well respected in the community. She's straight down the line, she's very sincere with her opinions, and she brings a real strength of common sense to her opinions. So I will put a nod in for Patty on this second round here.
And I'll offer support for Jane Meyer-Brom. Jane was also on my short list of folks who I ended up talking to. I didn't know her well before this, but found her to be very thoughtful and measured in her comments, in our conversations, and I think she certainly has many times the experience with the island community that I have, having been here a whole lot longer, and I think she could be great.
Any other comments? Yeah, Mike?
Well, I was with Elle, I wanted to nominate five people. But one of the screens that I used as well is who's run for office. And, you know, to be frank, I gave people extra points for that as I was considering all the various candidates and trying to whittle them down to five, for the same reason that Mike mentioned. You know, you put your name out there, you know, you're spending money and time, you gotta put a team together, it's hard work. And because of that, to me, it really demonstrates the willingness of that individual to want to help lead this community. So I'm gonna weigh in with Patty for that very reason, and there are many that were on my short list that unfortunately are not at this round now. But because she's run, she understands what it's like, she's seen the nooks and crannies, she understands the issues, and lastly, you know, she's an avid biker. And I really want to see the bike ped plan get implemented. So those are big points for me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else like comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll close it and hand it back to Ally.
Okay, second roll call vote. Councilmember Bruce Bassett.
Jane Meyer-Brom.
Councilmember Mike Thero.
Patty Darling.
Councilmember Mike Grady.
Patty Darling.
Councilmember Dan Grous.
Debbie Burtland.
Deputy Mayor El Jenke.
Patty Darling.
Mayor Jim Pierman.
Jane Meyer-Brom.
Okay, we have one vote for Debbie Burtland, three votes for Patty Darling, two votes for Jane Meyer. That means that Steve Marshall, Aaron Cornblum, and Tana, excuse me, Tana Sen are no longer in the running. You still only have three votes for one candidate, for the moment.
For the moment. If there's no votes, if there's no votes, then it ends that.
If there's no votes?
No, if there's no votes, we have...
There's three nominees that did not receive a vote in this round.
Yeah.
Right. So they're, so they're out of the running.
Okay. Back to us, magic number's four, comments. Any comments? So we've got, excuse me, I'm reading here.
Debbie Burtland, Patty Darling, and Jane Meyer.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll close it down, let's go to the vote again.
Okay. Third roll call vote. Councilmember Bruce Bassett.
Jane Meyer-Brom.
Councilmember Mike Thero.
Patty Darling.
Councilmember Mike Grady.
Patty Darling.
Councilmember Dan Grous.
Debbie Burtland.
Deputy Mayor El Jenke.
Patty Darling.
Mayor Jim Pierman.
Jane Meyer-Brom.
Same vote as the last one.
Would you like to discuss, open it up for discussions?
What's the vote count?
Three, two, one.
Mr. Mayor, I'll just reiterate again, for me, it's a big deal that someone runs for office and spends the time and energy and their own money and time raising money, putting a campaign together, and then going door-to-door and putting your name out there and going in front of the town hall meetings and the coffees and everything else, and really being subjected to, you know, just about anything and everything. So, you know, for me, that swung me over to Patty once we were down to the list we had, so that's, that's why I'm gonna stay strong with that vote.
Mr. Mayor, you know how Councilmember Grady and myself sometimes go at it. Do you think you'll ever find a candidate where the two of us agree?[994.54][994.54](laughter)
I haven't thought of it in that frame, yeah.[1000.12][1000.12](laughter)
Yeah, I don't, I would have no problem serving with any of the people who are nominated so far. And I don't want to minimize the importance of having run for office. There were several people actually who had put their names in, including John and including Bob, who had run for office before and had that experience. Yeah, it's, I think that, that we have a history on this council of trying to bring people in from very diverse groups within the population. I think that, that there is, the reason I've been steadfast in the first three votes of supporting Debbie, very simply, is that she represents a very critical part of the island, which is in terms of the preschool community, in terms of the, in terms of the families, the younger families on the island. And I don't say for a second that Jane or Patty would be incapable of representing them, but I haven't had the privilege to work with Patty on things. I've obviously worked with Jane through her time on The Reporter and in other, in Sister City. But it is, I have, I do believe that Debbie has demonstrated throughout the ten years that I've had the privilege of knowing her, that she knows how to work through the process that I think is so critical to reaching consensus on the council. So I, you know, I could see any of the three serving on this council, but I'm not, of the three, I still firmly believe that Debbie would bring something to the council that possibly Jane and Patty would not bring, at least in, to the extent that I've indicated.
I think I've said everything I can about Jane, so I think she's just, and of course the other candidates, I don't see, we can go wrong with any three. This is a great, great group. So at this point, I'm gonna stay with Jane, and does anyone else want to? Nope?
I will weigh in briefly here. You know, I had the pleasure of running against Patty, and Patty was a upstanding opponent. I have not a single thing bad to say about how she ran her campaign and how that all works. She's very gracious in the entire course of that. And, so I have a lot of respect for her. Having gone through this interviewing process, though, I would say that I have talked at length with Jane and have come to have a great deal of respect for her and her ability to think through issues and articulate issues. And at the moment, I'm quite comfortable staying with my vote for Jane. That's where I will stand for now.
Anyone else? Nope. I guess we're taking another vote.
Fourth roll call vote. Councilmember Bruce Bassett.
Jane Meyer-Brom.
Councilmember Mike Thero.
Patty Darling.
Councilmember Mike Grady.
Patty Darling.
Councilmember Dan Grous.
Debbie Burtland.
Deputy Mayor El Jenke.
Jane Meyer-Brom.
Mayor Jim Pierman.
Jane Meyer-Brom.
Okay, we have one vote for Debbie Burtland, two votes for Patty Darling, and three votes for Jane Meyer.
I would, based upon Elle's changing his position, I will also agree to support Jane.
Any more discussion? Seeing none? Take a vote?
Fifth roll call vote. Councilmember Bruce Bassett.
Jane Meyer-Brom.
Councilmember Mike Thero.
Patty Darling.
Councilmember Mike Grady.
Patty Darling.
Councilmember Dan Grous.
Jane Meyer-Brom.
Deputy Mayor El Jenke.
Jane Meyer.
Mayor Jim Pierman.
Jane Meyer-Brom.
With four votes, Jane Meyer-Brom has been selected.[1340.04][1340.04](applause)
Again, as far as the group goes, this is a miserable assignment for us, because we really care about the other candidates. And so, thank you. Thank you for coming, and thank you for running, and thank you for putting yourself out there. And I certainly hope that we see you again, and you've definitely made an impact, an impression rather, on the council, and we will be looking for things to make sure that you're entwined in the community, if you so desire. So with that, I think we're gonna take a recess for five, 10 minutes, and then we'll get back to business.
Mr. Mayor, just for Jane's purposes, the swearing-in ceremony?
Oh, excuse me. Yeah, as we mentioned before, you're gonna have to endure the planning session now. That's this weekend, starts on Friday through Sunday. We're not taking any votes, so it's appropriate that you're there, is not sworn in. The first council meeting after that will do the official swearing-in, and it's appropriate that you invite Bob and a few other people to have pictures taken, and we can formally welcome you onboard, so.
Mr. Mayor, before, I just want to echo your comments to the other candidates. I have a great deal of respect for all of you who put your names forth and went through this process, and I really thank you for doing that. Our community is great because folks like you get involved and do this, and so thank you. I hope you don't go away feeling too disappointed with this, and I hope that we will see a lot more of you in future community affairs, so please stay involved.
Well, and let me add under that, please keep in mind, there are three seats that open up this year, so time is short.[1461.12][1461.12](laughter)
I don't know what to make of that comment, but anyway.[1469.12][1469.12](laughter) Would anyone else like to make a comment? Okay, with that, let's have a break, and we'll reconvene in a few minutes. Jane, before you go, I just wanted... When you were at the reporter, did you endorse L? This is quite a guy, isn't it? One last time before we get going. I just want to compliment my fellow council members on the debate and putting the votes together and the nominations. This was incredibly tough thing. There's some very strong personal relationships with the people in the room, and I thought you guys, and I'll say that generically now, did really a super job. And I just really respect you all and thought that was great. So with that, and Ally, thanks for doing the roll count. So with that, let's move on to regular business. Oh, no, we already did that one. 4599 Basic Life Support and Chief Tubbs.
For the record, Katie Knight, City Attorney, I have Fire Chief Tubbs with me. I know, I was saying that on purpose. We bring before you tonight the Basic Life Support Transport Fee Authorizing Ordinance. This is a housekeeping piece. Obviously, the council is aware that you resolved in December of 2010 to impose transport fees for basic life support. This is the ordinance that describes the mechanics of how that is to happen. The biggest piece of the ordinance I want to draw your attention to is that we clearly lay out that the city's policy is clear within the ordinance. Ability to pay is never a condition of service. With that, there's a few provisions in there that keep us in alignment with Medicaid and Medicare requirements. I can let the chief address. He's been working with the service provider on the billing pieces to make sure that we continue to keep in compliance with Medicare and Medicaid. We've waded through a large stack of documents to ensure that we are, in fact, in compliance. And with that, I'll leave it for questions from the council with regard to any of the provisions in the ordinance. I would point out that there's a sunset provision in this for one year because the council did state that they wanted to try out this policy for one year to see how it worked. So we will be coming back to you in February of 2012 to see if, in fact, you want to continue it. If there's any questions from the council?
Yeah, I guess I have a couple. The... Let's see, the effective date is February 25th of this year.
Correct.
But it also says the effective date is 30... Take effect and be enforced 30 days after its passage and publication. And that seems to me to be slightly inconsistent.
We just tried to make sure that we would have the 30 days because obviously we have referendum and initiative provisions in the city. So it can only ever be effective 30 days after passage and publication. So we just gave ourselves time to make sure that we comply with the 30-day requirement.
What if... So 30 days from today is before February 25th, right?
I can explain. So after... If the ordinance is adopted tonight, I will then put a legal notice into the newspaper, which is the official publication. Since we are a weekly newspaper, it won't get printed until next Wednesday. So it's 30 days after passage and publication. So 30 days from next Wednesday.
What date is that?
26?
Yeah, it'll... The... Let me just look here on the calendar.
Thanks.
Wednesday, the 26th, is when it will get published. And then 30 days after that is when it will be in effect.
Well, that's my point. It sounds like that's not February 25th. Okay, well, what if it's not final till next meeting? Second reading, which would be next meeting?
Then we'll amend it to ensure that, in fact, it will be the 30 days after publication and passage and publication. We're asking that the city council waive the rules and just pass it at this meeting. Again, it's just a housekeeping ordinance to implement the policy that the council voted and approved in December.
Yeah, I understand that, but that strikes me as... What, I have one or the other in the ordinance? 30 days after publication or whatever, and not the date?
We can always... If you want to amend the ordinance to strike the date so we can just be more flexible, we can certainly accommodate that. And then, I think there's only one part in there where we actually have the specific date. We were trying to balance to make sure we came back within the year so we would have the sunset provision, so that's why we locked in on the dates.
Okay, another... I guess I'm still confused about ability to pay.
Correct.
In paragraph 4.601010C, it talks about billing insurance companies... Billing individuals for amounts in excess of the insurance available?
If you see... It'll say that... Okay, so is your question, why is that different than A and B?
Well, I just... In reading through this, we talk about ability to pay, and then we talk about the city policy is we don't charge anybody who does not have the ability to pay.
One of the things that we had to ensure was that we were in compliance with Medicare and Medicaid provisions so that there was no fraud, that we weren't just giving gifts of public funds. So the policies that have been laid out indicate that we can waive the fee and still receive payments from Medicare and Medicaid if the uninsured patient is indigent or infirm. And what the policies have evolved in what we've learned in the several months in trying to make sure we can implement this is that what they look to, the authorizing agencies look to, do you make an effort to pay? Do you make an effort to determine whether or not the person is indigent? One of the issues that was a little unique to Mercer Island is that there are a lot of people on Mercer Island who are actually self-insured, so who are possibly able to pay even though they don't have insurance like the chief and I might have insurance. So the policy is that we do reasonable collection efforts. There's also... And I think I'll let the chief address this, too, because there's an ability within our billing services to show, I can't pay that. But do you want to talk about that provision in the billing?
Yes. Spelled out fairly clearly, as I understand. We're still working with the vendor on this, but Medicare and Medicaid, as a federal agency, have a requirement on what they call financial assistance, which is this ability to pay. And they use the poverty scale, and it's a sliding scale. So based on where a person sits on that, they will or will not be billed for that. Does that answer the question?
I guess it's helpful. I guess getting back to paragraph C here, that talks about charging more than the insurance benefits available to an individual. And that provision, I don't recall coming up in our conversations about this ordinance in terms... We said that insurance companies typically bill $800 or something like that, plus mileage. And the city, I forget the city's... What we are thinking about charging is $700 or $750?
$770.
$770.
Right.
So I guess why is that paragraph there? I mean, why are we talking about charging more than the insurance company might pay?
And I have a good answer for you.
Because maybe the insurance company pays less than $770, is what you're saying?
The officer of the inspector general, under the federal agency, has given us an advisory opinion, so... Which has been interpreted that as long as the unpaid balance is owed by a resident of the city... So you'll know... You'll notice in Sub B, a resident of the city or an employee at the city or working at the city. That's because those persons have paid taxes, so that enables the city to waive any fees because the idea is that that portion has already been taken care of. For somebody who's from outside the city, just a visitor to the city, then there might be an additional effort, but there's always the ability of the city to go ahead and waive it, too. Again, it goes to a nuance with Medicare and Medicaid where you make reasonable efforts to collect. So that's the difference between somebody who's sitting on Mercer Island or working on Mercer Island, as opposed to somebody who's just from outside the city and needs to be transported.
Okay, so the reason paragraph D is in this ordinance is to cover the possibility that they're transferring a non-resident or somebody who does not work on Mercer Island?
Correct.
And it's driven largely by requirements of Medicaid.
Correct.
And of the 800 transports that occur, presumably on the island, the number of Medicaid-eligible patients, at least our experience, has been, Chief, 30, 40?
Percent?
No, I'm talking numbers. I think I remember saw the data. It's a very small number of Medicaid-eligible patients.
Correct. I don't remember what the number is offhand, but it is a smaller number.
It's smaller. So the point here is we're required to put this provision in to take care of a fairly small number of instances when this comes up, but we do have to have it in the ordinance.
Correct.
The vast majority of patients will be Mercer Island residents that have insurance or have enough resources to pay the full cost anyway, and they'll be billed.
Correct. And I will again express, we clearly lay out in the ordinance that ability to pay is not a condition of service. So I wanted to emphasize that.
Okay, you made that clear. And then, so I go into paragraph D, in the third line, it says, "transport fees because he is unable or unwilling." And that kind of conflicts with the whole notion if somebody's not... If they're indigent or not able to pay the fee, you're saying notwithstanding.
And that goes back to making sure you're not giving a gift of public funds or that making sure the person is not indigent because of the other provisions we've built in and the other sections and with the policy that if you can't pay for it, then the city's able to waive it. Within our billing policies, there's going to be an ability to do an application to waive the fee. There's a number of provisions where there's flexibility built in so that we can go ahead and waive the fee. But the onus put on us by the federal government is that you have to make a reasonable effort to collect. You just can't say, oh, you look poor, so we're not going to charge you. We have to make the reasonable efforts so someone who's not going to... Who's going to say, I'm not going to give you my insurance, you can't.
to take care of a fairly small number of instances when this comes up, but we do have to have it in the ordinance.
Correct.
The vast majority of patients will be Mercer Island residents that have insurance or have enough resources to pay the full cost anyway, and they'll be billed.
Correct. And, and I will again express, we clearly lay out in the ordinance that ability to pay is not a condition of service. So I wanted to emphasize that.
Okay, you made that clear. And then, so I go into paragraph D, in the third line, it says, "transport fees because he is unable or unwilling." And that kind of conflicts with the whole notion, if somebody's not, you know, if they're indigent or not able to pay the fee, you're saying notwithstanding.
And that goes back to making sure you're not giving a gift of public funds, or that making sure the person is not indigent, because of the other provisions we've built in, in the other sections, and with the policy that if you can't pay for it, um, then the city's able to waive it. Within our billing policies, there's going to be an ability to, um, do an application to waive the fee. There's a number of provisions where there's flexibility built in so that we can go ahead and waive the fee. But the onus put on us by the federal government is that you have to make a reasonable effort to collect. You just can't say, oh, you, you look poor, so we're not going to charge you. We have to make the reasonable efforts. So someone who's not going to, who's going to say, I'm not going to give you my insurance, you can't charge me, that creates a difficulty for us. However, if somebody says, I can't pay, then, you know, they just have to do a little bit of, uh, paperwork to show us, and we're good to go.
So this is another example of, we have to have this provision in our ordinance to meet the requirements of Medicaid.
Of Medicare, right.
Medicaid, Medicare.
Right.
Well, I understand the unwilling part of it. I guess the unable part of it is what I'm not clear on.
So keeping in mind that, you know, with a little bit of research, if we find that person's truly not able to pay, it will be waived. It, it's just that the onus we have, that we have to do a little work on our end to make sure that we're in compliance with federal law. That's, that's what this looks at.
Who's going to be doing this, checking?
We have, want to address that?
Checking the billing service. We have a internal audit process set up for that. We'll be auditing them on a monthly basis.
No, who is the billing service, I think is his question?
Well, I, it's kind of, where's, where's this additional labor coming from? You've got that taken care of?
We're doing it internally, correct.
We're doing it internally?
Mm-hmm.
Let me see. Uh, Ms. Knight, you mentioned that, uh, you have a fair population self-insured? Did I hear you correctly?
We, we tried to encompass the idea. I don't, I don't know if we have a fair population unin- uninsured or self-insured, but we wanted to be sure we addressed that issue. So it's my understanding that there's probably a few more on Mercer Island as opposed to some other jurisdictions.
And, Mr. City Manager, do you have a feel for how many self-insured we have on the island?
We have no way of knowing. Uh, it's...
But more than normal populate, or normal?
It's just based on...
I'd like to remind, I'd like to remind the council that the reason that we're doing this is the assumption that it's going to hit the insurance companies. This, not necessarily an instance for, with those who are self-insured, they're going to be paying twice. Their property tax, EMS tax, and then again, uh, this pay for service.
Well, and, and we'll remind the council that the, those people that are self-insured now, if they are transported by AMR, they are paying AMR already.
Um, so, I, you, you talked about sunset. What, what does sunset mean?
That means that, uh, this authorizing ordinance, given the language in it, will only be in, in effect for a year. We will be back in February of two thousand twelve to see if the council wants to continue this or not. It's going to take a motion by council to continue the program.
Okay, and so what is the council going to do? Is council, oh, I, I guess it's okay, and Councilmember Grouse is going to say, I guess it's okay. Or are you going to, are there metrics in which to evaluate, and what are those metrics?
Um, the, the plan, I believe we discussed at the last meeting where council approved this, was to report back to the council in Ju- June. Rich, does that sound about right? With those metrics and some numbers associated with those metrics. So the plan would be to give council a periodic update on the status of the program.
Well, I mean, just report on it now. What are the metrics? I'm not asking for the numbers, but what are the things that, that determine whether this is a successful program or not?
Well, we're still finalizing them. That's all part of the body of work, but we're looking at things like out-of-service times, um, station availability, some of the things that address the concerns that were raised throughout the discussion of this initiative.
So, Mike, you got, you got to understand that nobody has any way of knowing what the council in February two thousand twelve might do. Exactly.
Well, that's, you're, you're talking about...
Don't ask the question, what's the council going to do in one year? Nobody knows.
That's not correct. That, that, like, that is from a political perspective. What I'm asking is from a process, uh, perspective on when you have a, a, uh, trial period, at the beginning of that trial period, you throw down some metrics and you say, this is, this is green light, yellow light, or red light, and when you, at the end of those twelve...
Well, I was just going to, I was going to assure the council that we will provide you with performance measures before we bill the first patient. And that is a fair request. It's what staff is supposed to do, and we'll provide you with what those metrics will be. What will be, what data will we be tracking? We should do it before the first transport, not six months later.
Correct. And what I was just about to say was, if we're doing an experiment, which we are, and the hypothesis, what I, what I want to see, and I think what Mr. Cyril is also asking, is what are the hypotheses going into this experiment? And what are the metrics to gauge whether or not it's working or not? And I want to see the plan for that experiment before the vehicle leaves the station. Not in June, and not a month from now, but before the vehicle leaves the station.
Uh, and we, we promise we will do that. We'll bring, we will show that to you. Um, but we're in implementation at this stage from a policy that is adopted by the council. So it, we won't be bringing back metrics and a, sort of, a systems look for you to approve. We're already in implementation, uh, but we want you to see what it is that we'll be tracking, so that you'll know, if that...
Well, Rich, you know, if, if we're embarking on an experiment, I want to know, one, I want to know what the experi- what the experimental design is, and I want to know what the metrics are to decide whether it would work or not, before you conduct the experiment.
And that's what we're going to do. All I'm saying is, we're going to bring it to you informationally.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, bring it back for discussion. If someone has a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to suspend council rules of procedure five point two, requiring a second reading of an ordinance.
Okay, moved in second. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed?
Aye.
Okay, hand coat, count here. How many, all those in favor, say aye? Opposed? Okay, then it dies, okay?
No, we just now go on to, we go, we go through first reading.
We'll go through first reading, that one, okay. So this is first reading? Okay, so we're not going to, uh, adopt the ordinance tonight. Okay, that's right. Excuse me for missing that point, okay? So, not adopting. Let me, let me elaborate here. The reason I voted for, uh, voting against it creates a, a second reading is because, uh, we're going to have a conversation this weekend about what potentially to do with some dollars left over from the sewer-lake line project. And, uh, that should be an interesting discussion, and that's why I think we ought to have a second reading on that. Okay, so noted. Great, well, let's move on then. Uh...
Well, no, no, you have to give staff direction on what to do to bring it back for second reading.
Aye.
I mean, then there, you have to go through a first reading and, and then direct staff to do something so they can bring it back for second reading.
Well, I, in this discussion, well, I haven't heard any substantive changes. It's only a process check that Councilmember Jenke has outlined. So, uh, in the absence of, uh, in the absence of any substantive changes to the ordinance, we'll bring it back, um, at a time af- after the planning session.
Okay.
It'll be at your next meeting.
I would think it would be an appropriate time to bring those metrics, uh, to the table.
If they're ready, we'll bring them.
I mean, ready, I'm not talk, you just say, these are the metrics, one, two, you know, station time, uh, uh, expenses, revenues, et cetera, et cetera.
We'll see if we can have it available by then.
Good.
Okay, moving on then. Agenda Bill forty-five ninety-five. This is, uh, Youth and Family Services. And Cindy, there you are, the senior commission.
Good evening, members of the council. City Manager Rich Conrad. I'm Cindy Goodwin, the director for the Department of Youth and Family Services. And tonight before you is Agenda Bill forty-five ninety-five regarding the senior commission. Um, and I've attached several agenda bills, the previous four agenda bills, uh, the, um, the ordinance to create a commission, and also an attendance roster, and an outline of what Eastside Cities do. Um, it's here for review because a group of citizens came up in two thousand six and asked us, asked the city, uh, and had a lot of conversations with staff, to consider some sort of representational body so they can have input into city services and activities. A lot of discussions, and after that, uh, myself plus the Parks and Recreation Director in two thousand six came before you with an agenda bill to suggest a couple of avenues that we could do this. At that time, it was determined that, uh, we would create a sev- come back with an ordinance for a seven-member commission, uh, gave a few outlines for it, um, came back. We have a senior commission. Um, we had an interim report. Um, the, the group was asked by you folks to come back after a period of a year with a few recommendations that, uh, they can show that they've done something, ask for a work plan. It's gone through the history of about three years. It's had its ups and downs. It is, um, in the past year, we've had some resignations. It, it's a group of seven citizens. They've ranged in age from fifty-five up until about ninety-two. Um, they're all people very committed to having senior issues heard by the city. The city, in, in all of the agenda bills that have come before you, in directions that you've given to the Department of Youth and Family Services and Parks and Recreation, it's been very clear that as a city, we want some kind of body for senior, for senior citizens on the island. Um, I, I presented the, the, the outline of the agenda bills in kind of the process of how things have gone. And as you can see, in the past year, there were a number of meetings that were canceled because there was a lack of a quorum. Um, so we have good intent. We have a city that wants to hear from their seniors. You have seniors who want some sort of body where they can give input into our services and programs. But the structure that we have has not worked. It, uh, it's, we have, at this time, in most seniors' lives, they're traveling a lot. They go away for long periods of time. There may be health issues. There are kids and families that, um, might call them away for periods of time. There are differing agendas, and how those get played out or settled, uh, varies depending on the skills of the different people on the commission. Some people go outside of the commission to speak with other people. Um, it hasn't been smooth, and it's been difficult, uh, for the chairs of the commissions. There's been a lot of effort put into it. So what I've presented here is the history. Um, what, the last page I really outlined was after last year, and having a, a series of resignations from four, four members. Um, I spoke with, uh, people in Parks and Recreation Department. I spoke with all the people that left the senior commission. And I spoke with, uh, our current chair. We spoke with, we met with other chairs of, of senior representing bodies on Eastside Cities. What the conversation centered around is, how did you get your senior council or commissions or advisory groups, whatever you had? How did you get them started? Why do you have the structure that you have? And tried to glean from that what might work for us as a city. Uh, and on the last page of the agenda bill, I've outlined what I think might be a good stab at how we could, what we could morph into. Um, so, again, ending last spring, we have three members remaining. One person's term is going to end. It went on hiatus for the summer, and we maintained that hiatus because I, um, approached my boss and said, could we take a look at how this is doing? I'd like to bring it back before the city council and speak with you about what I think might work. Um, so having had conversations with other cities, having conversations with city staff about how could we get senior input, um, there's a few things that I think would work. One is, I think that it should be a, I think the mission should stay the same. It's a good mission, and this was actually, uh, taken from the city council meeting in which you directed staff to develop, uh, to work with a senior commission. And I have that outlined on the last page. Um, it should remain the same. The one change I made was that the age of the body should be from sixty-five and up, representing, uh, senior, senior, um, senior citizens sixty-five and up. The staffing should remain at the city department level, the department director level, and that the membership should go from seven members to eleven members. Uh, that's because rarely did we have a quorum, but it, it also limited the discussions that we could have and the work that we could consider, because seven was too few. Um, and that the membership, as opposed to being a body where it would be a senior council that came and reported to the council, I think it should be a senior advisory, uh, group, board, that, uh, went through the regular advisory process and reported to a director, uh, department director. And I think that that would...
Advise the director.
Thank you, sorry. Thank, thank you. And I think that what that would do, would give, um, direct feedback to us as department heads, and, uh, that we could give to our staff. But I also think that it would make it a less political body, and I think that people would be more likely to work together, instead of going outside of that, outside of their group. Um, so that's kind of the history. Um, Pete Bailey is here with me tonight. He was the chair. Pete put in an incredible amount of work to get the, to get the group to, to work together as a team. It was, it was, it was a hard job. And again, a lot of the, the conditions are just natural. At that time in life, they travel a lot. Uh, there were too few. We didn't have quorum a lot. Um, and people had differing agendas, and that's just a reality with this group. So, um, Pete was involved in all of these conversations about what type of advisory group or board we thought would work, and he was, uh, he was with me when we came up with this and what's written before you. And so that's a recommendation, to move from a senior commission, um, in, into a senior advisory board.
Cindy?
Yeah.
People are wondering, uh, I would love to, uh, say hi to Pete, and maybe you can bring Pete up and...
Oh, yeah, do, you know, I said, Pete, yes, we'd be happy to have Pete, which likes to come up.
I actually wanted to stay back there when I came.
Yeah.
The two of us up here.
Anyway, I'm Pete Bailey, uh, better known as William Peter Bailey, uh, longtime resident of, of the city. And, uh, I was volunteered, uh, to be part of the senior commission, through a forum that was on the web. And, uh, and I got trusted with being the chair just prior to the implosion of, of the organization. It was unfortunate that the politic of the organization versus, uh, people not trying to understand what the mission of the organization was, became the, the, the agenda. And, uh, in an attempt to structure a, a true process to deal with the agenda and the mission of the organization, became almost impossible to do. Uh, and people lost, uh, desire to participate. Even in spite of that, I, I, I think that, uh, we ought to keep trying to do this until we can get it right. And, uh, I think, if you go to, look at the history of, uh, senior citizens and the involvement of, of cities and states and the federal government, when all of this started, I think, back in nineteen sixty-five. And in those days, the thing of, of, or the game plan was to come up with a senior citizen center. And, and that isolated seniors from the community. I think the way to go is, what we're trying to do, uh, in this city, is to let it be integrated into the total process and, and stop, uh, isolating the seniors into something that, that sets them aside as, as a happenstance rather than an integral part of the community. And, uh, I think as we morph into advisory board, with the, with the use of the word advisory, I think we'll start to, to bound, uh, the mission of what we are trying to achieve. Uh, a lot of us felt when we, uh, became part of the organization, we were going to implement things. And, uh, so we didn't get the message very clear. And that became the dialogue, uh, rather than the action plan. But anyway, I can go on indefinitely about this, but, uh, I think the, uh, the notion of, of what Cindy is talking about, I think is the right step to, to start to bound and, uh, cause this organization to perform its mission.
Yeah, uh, Bruce, then Mike?
Cindy or Pete? I am stumbling a little bit. I, I think you have, um, a, a clear impression of the difference between a commission and an advisory board, and I, but I don't see that spelled out here. And I'm wondering if you can help me to understand, uh, what the mechanics of the difference are, because it's not, I, what I hear from you is, it's not just a name change, it's, it's something fundamentally different, but I'm not getting quite what that is.
Okay, okay. Um, when I, my understanding of senior council was that it was a council that made recommendations to, uh, senior commission that made recommendations to the council. And that really left some, gave some members of the senior commission a different thought about the work that they would do. Um, if, if we move toward an advisory board, it would be eleven members that would advise the two department directors. And it, it's less of a political orientation for people, and it's really more about taking stock of what we do in the city and making, uh, giving advice on that. Rich, it looks like you want to say something?
Well, I was just going to say, the, the term I've used with Cindy when we've talked about it is, it works more like a users group. These are, these are a segment of the, the island's population that, uh, uses our services, Parks and Rec and YFS. And, uh, they have interest in how those services are run, how they interact, um, what new services might be desirable, what old ones might be dropped. And the, the notion is to have a representative structure of that user population, talking directly to the service delivery mechanisms, our staff. Uh, I, I observe, and maybe I'm wrong, but I observe when the senior commission was created... I observe, and maybe I'm wrong, but I observed when the senior commission was created as an advisory body to the city council, it became a political body, not a service delivery body. And it lost its way. Frankly, I think it didn't know how to advise or who to advise, and it started going in lots of different directions, and I think it frustrated the people that were actually there. So, this is a model that's much more like what we had years ago. I wasn't directly involved, but I was aware of it, what was called the Council on Aging. And it was a very effective, active group of seniors that were advising Parks and Rec at the time, not so much YFS, but Parks and Rec. And it worked quite well. It had some good leadership and some good staff support, and we're hoping we can replicate that.
I'd like to concur with what Rich said, that the notion of an advisory to an organization that is the implementer integrates it into, just upfront, rather than a path for a political discussion, to deal with what we're trying to deliver, modify, change for a segment of our population. And it's my belief that we can focus a lot easier in an advisory role. In fact, we used a notion of baselining. And what we did before we imploded, what we tried to do, was to baseline the services that were being delivered. Until you have that baseline, there's no discussion as to what's good or bad. And so, we had direct, when we were doing basic, or at least we were trying to do advisory, because we had the departments in to present to us what they were doing, why they were doing, how it happened, and maybe this or that might be modified. So, we believe that that's, that might be the strategy for this community, that we intend to integrate seniors, rather than to isolate them.
Thank you. Mike?
Cindy, we spent a lot of time having this discussion a few years back, and I recall it was heated at times, but it was my understanding that the path that we took was the one that was most representative of what the department was advocating for. So, I'm curious, you mentioned that, Pete, you mentioned politics started to creep its way into decision-making, and I share that same concern frequently. But I'm curious, what issues were so severe that led to the implosion of a group that we were told was going to be very successful?
The, I think at both times that I presented an agenda bill regarding this, I think that I gave recommendations other than the development of a senior commission. I think that I, there were two options that I thought might work. One was an advisory board similar to this, or dividing up the YFS advisory board as it stands now and allotting a certain percentage of those seats for senior representatives. And I thought, actually, that that would be the best. And I think that there, at the time, if you recall, there were a lot of seniors that came here, and they really wanted a body that reported to the city council. And so, and I think at the time, it was a, it was a good decision. We thought, you as a body said, "Let's give this a try. Let's give it a go. Let's see if it works." And that's the way that it went. And at the, at the time, I said, "We'll go with it. We'll implement anything you give us direction to do." But I had supported, actually, another model. And I was not familiar with the model of a senior commission. I hadn't worked with one before, so.
How about you, Pete? I'm curious, what were some of the issues that led to this situation?
When I took over the responsibility of the chair, it was a political environment. That was the agenda. How it got to be that, I don't know. But if you read the history, or at least I did go home and read the history after how this organization got created, it obviously had an agenda. The people that apparently were the advocates created an agenda that they were trying to do. And it had something to do with reporting to the city council was very, very important, whatever, for whatever reason. That was the most important thing, more important than the mission. And it caused the lack of an agenda to happen in our meetings. We were discussing the politic of it, rather than the mission of it. And it continued, and I'll say this because I don't know whether you were there at the meeting, there was a confrontation between the departments and elements of the commission as to who controlled the orders of the day. And that can happen in any organization.
Sure.
But if that's the main agenda of the organization, then you don't have an organization. And that's what happened. My observation, we didn't have an organization. We had some people that would show up.
So, you had a city council representative at the meetings, and you had, how many people from the department would typically be at the meetings?
One or two.
Okay. So, as we morph into this new model, the advisory model, what's the staffing going to look like? Because I'm assuming we won't have a council representative.
Yeah.
And I would assume, then, that the staffing would be much less. But I'm curious what that would look like.
I think that we would still have a director, would still staff it, and we would still have somebody take notes, because it would be an advisory board of the city. And that would be the difference. And I honestly don't know, as far as protocol, whether there's a council member assigned to it. But the board doesn't report to the council, and I don't know that question. I don't know the answer to that. Do you know that, Rich?
I think that would be up to the board. If the board wants to send a report annually to the city council, I think it's totally up to the advisory board. But it's primarily advisory, as I said, it's a user group that's, is talking to the people that are delivering the services. It's not a policy body. It's a user body. And that way, you don't get into a description or a big discussion about national housing policy, or national transportation policy. You talk about, how often are we going to run the senior bus to certain events like, you know, bingo, or-
Whatever it is.
Whatever the event is. If you keep it focused on what it is people want to do, rather than have it be a debate society.
I know, Mike, and I probably know you better because you were in more meetings than I, and then Dan came on.
Can I be talking?
What were your observations? I know that I struggled with the very first meeting that I took chair of, because it was a political thing. And those of you that looked at my application, I answered three questions, and I said I had to have yes with all of them. And one was, was this something to do? Number two, did it have meaning? Did it have a decent objective? And number three is, did I want to get involved? And I answered yes to all three of them, looking at the mission statement as I read And when I went to my second or third meeting where we struggled with ourselves, there wasn't a soul that was dealing with the mission. They were dealing with a political thing, of which I had nothing to do with. I had no idea, until I read the history of how the organization was created, how you could have morphed into that direction. And I think you need to be careful, because you can waste people's time. And it gets to be a hard thing to control as a chair, as to setting an agenda that's meaningful for what I perceived the mission was, and I think what other people did as well. But anyway, Mike, you-
It's, it was a tough group for me, very well-meaning. The folks there were very well-meaning. I thought there were some more personality-driven conflicts than anything, quite frankly. But when you came on board, Mr. Bailey, I thought you were a breath of fresh air, and it's just like the candidates we had for council. I mean, if you look at Mr. Bailey's resume, you'd say, "My goodness sakes." Just very impressive. And Cindy, I'd like to also take this, you know, there were some trying times there, but you, throughout the time that I was there, maintained your composure, your calmness, and, you know, it's walk, crawl, run. We may have had a stumble there, but with this advisory model, I think that's a, that should be a good model in which to plod on down the road with and look after seniors' best interests, which, you know, we have a huge population here, and it's, there's, there is a need for an organization like yourself.
I was telling Cindy, when we were sitting back there talking about, if you change the name of the organization that she runs to Seniors and Family Services, just change the title of that organization. I think that you would see more of the integration of seniors into the community. I wouldn't be surprised that our population of seniors is a lot larger than the youth. So, you know, you've got to deal with situations that you, that you had. And the notion of an advisory to organizations that are implementing what we do as a, as a community, I think it's a strong thing to do. That's not to say that we're going to do it right, or whomever's going to be involved, do it right the first time, but that doesn't mean that you want not to continue to, to attempt to do it. And I think that by tightening it into the implementing community, probably sheds a better environment to, to make the mission come into being. But I would say one thing, because I'm a strategic thinker. I think if you don't have a plan, you aren't going to do anything. So, I think the notion of an advisory board implies that you ought to have a plan on how you do this.
Great. Bruce?
I'm, I'm happy to support this. The only question I really have is maybe more for Rich or Katie, but do we really have ordinance, ordinances, policies, resolutions, and bylaws that all have to be modified in order to make this change?
I'm not so sure about the bylaws, but we do have an ordinance, I think we adopted, that we need to modify.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The ordinance says.
This, the city council created a new commission by ordinance with very specific membership and obligations and responsibilities, not unlike the planning commission, and we would need to go back and sort of undo that.
Well, then, I would move to direct staff to amend applicable city ordinances, policies, resolutions, and bylaws related to the senior commission, so as to discontinue the Mercer Island Senior Commission and establish a senior advisory group.
Okay. Discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Great. It passes. Thank you so much for your commitment and time, and it sounds like you've got a history background in organizational management. Did I pick up on that?
Yes.
Yes, I did.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. With that, we'll go into other business. No council member absences. We've got our planning, Rich, not, but planning.
And then let's correct the dates here on the planning schedule.
Okay.
Is it, it is this weekend?
It's, okay.
Mr. Litzner made it onto the agenda alley.
Okay. Any other absences that we know in the future?
Yeah, I will not be here the February 22nd.
Okay.
And I will not be here March 7th.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Planning schedule, any comments, changes? This weekend's going to be an opportunity to really get into it.
Well, I just point out whether it makes any difference or not. The correct date for the planning session should be this weekend.
Twenty, 21 to 23. And since you're on that, let me hand out to you your notebooks.
Just take it off the top. Do it by your name.
And?
The number I put is a million bucks.
All right. We have no board appointments. Council member reports? Any reports?
Two, but it's weekend, I think.
Mike, anything since last meeting?
Well, that's not a meeting.
Nope. Okay. Dan, anything?
I don't know whether it's-
No? Anything?
No.
Okay. Bruce? Mike?
Okay. I don't have anything. So, with that, we have an executive session to discuss collective bargaining agreements for sonnet to RCW 42 dot 30 dot 1404A for approximately, will be 20 minutes? Do you need 20 minutes? Okay. So, we will come back at, let's go five after, huh?
Five after. We need more than we need three.
Okay. Five after. Great. And Jane, we've got to swear you in before you join us on this one.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.